One.
Good evening, this is Mayor Pro Tem Britt Moore calling to order the December 1st, 2025 regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here on the dais, we have all members of council except for our mayor, who's out of town on business. But we have everyone else and we have an opportunity to welcome back a familiar face that we're glad to have join us filling a term vacancy, and that's Councilman Chris Williams. So, welcome back, Chris. At this time, we're going to ask you to stand for a moment of silence in our Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to deliver the United States of America to the people who stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, you have seen our agenda packet, and at this time, if there's no comments or questions, I will call for a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Our first order of business is a couple of proclamations, and our esteemed mayor has developed the habit of coming around to the front, so I'm gonna come around here and try to fill his shoes on this. Our first proclamation is to recognize the group of Habitat for Humanity. Last week, I had the opportunity to go and visit with these fine young men and women down on Tryon and Green area, the several projects they have going on, building very nice homes for our community and helping that area to revitalize and provide housing for good folks to occupy. So, at this time, if you guys would mind joining me up front, I would appreciate it. Just welcome them when they come forward. Thank y'all for being here. And I want to recognize them all by name. Susan, do you want to come up? Susan is our president and CEO of our Habitat for Humanity and does a terrific job. But we have with us Tessa Goldless, and Benjamin Cole, and Arianna Jones, and DeShawn Kenny, Eli Lemieux, Nathan Moray, and Reese Malone. They, uh, thank you. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas service to others is defining American value, and national service and volunteerism continue to help communities meet critical needs; and whereas AmeriCorps National Civilian Community Corps, NCC, members address pressing challenges from disaster response to supporting veterans and building homes; and whereas national service strengthens communities by expanding economic opportunity and providing participants with valuable education, career skills, and leadership development; and whereas national service is a successful public-private partnership that leverages resources to create lasting community impact; and whereas AmeriCorps members exemplify commitment and patriotism through their intensive service; and whereas Habitat for Humanity of High Point, Archdale, and Trinity has hosted AmeriCorps NCC team for six weeks this fall, advancing affordable home ownership in our community. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2025, as AmeriCorps NCC Day in recognition of Team Maple Seven, Tessa Goldless, Benjamin Cole, Arianna Jones, DeShawn Kenny, Eli Lemieux, Nathan Moray, and Reese Malone, whose service has made a meaningful impact in the city of High Point. In wit's whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause be affixed the seal of the city of High Point, North Carolina, this first day of December, 2025, Mayor Cyril Jefferson. Now the copy reads. Thank you so very much. Thank you. If you get a chance to go by that area and look at some of the work that they've done, it's very impressive. Susan, your leadership has been wonderful. I learned something that I didn't grasp the full impact, but our Habitat for Humanity store here in town funds almost the entire budget for these homes that are being built. That's pretty incredible when you, when you think about that. So, when you think about some things that you may be looking for, or purchasing for you, or your home, or Christmas, then please consider that, because that money stays right here in, in this town and, and helps us. And these folks have come from many different states all across the country, and they've spent six weeks of their time here and their dedication to what you do is exemplary, and I couldn't be more proud to have you in High Point. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You can go back. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. See, there, I already messed up. Forgot to picture. Mostly pulled apart.
On the count of three. One, two, three. One, one, actually, one, two, three. And last one. One, two, three.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it very much. Have a great trip. Thank you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation, we will recognize the High Point Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. With us, I believe, we have President Candace B. Dixon, and First Vice President Marilyn Artis. How are you? Good to see you. Thank you for being here. And Second Vice President Ateya Williams, and all the other members or anyone else that's here for this, please come forward. Y'all can come down this way a little bit. And I know this not on purpose, but y'all all look really pretty and festive in your red. I know, I know that's the color you always wear, but it's appropriate at this time of year. So. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, by 22 visionary collegiate women at Howard University, grounded in the enduring principles of scholarship, sisterhood, service, and social action. And whereas, the High Point Alumni Chapter, originally chartered December 7th of 1949, as the Alpha Omega Sigma Chapter, was established at the historic Daniel Brooks Center by 14 dynamic charter members, becoming the first African-American Greek letter organization in the city of High Point. And whereas, for 76 years, the High Point Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has championed transformative community programs aligned with the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust, educational development, economic development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas, the chapter has demonstrated unwavering commitment to uplifting the residents of High Point through mentorship, advocacy, volunteerism, and the awarding of more than 500 scholarships to deserving students. An investment that continues to expand opportunity and strengthen the future of our community. And whereas, the High Point Alumni Chapter has further advanced civic engagement and community enhancement through partnerships with more than 20 local organizations, and through its longstanding dedication to the beautification of our city via its Adopt a Street collaboration. And whereas, the city of High Point extends its sincerest gratitude to the chapter's past and present members for their steadfast leadership, exceptional service, and enduring legacy of positive impact. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, do hereby recognize and celebrate December 7th, 2025, as the 76th anniversary of the High Point Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority in the city of High Point, and encourage all residents to join in honoring the chapter and recognizing the chapter's profound historical significance and its continued commitment to service, empowerment, and community enhancement. Mayor Cyril Jefferson. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you all. Thank you so very much. Appreciate what you do. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Britt.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our public comment period. That's held the first meeting of each month, and persons who have signed the register to speak shall be taken in the order in which they are listed, and others who wish to speak will be recognized after that time. Persons addressing the city council are asked to limit their comments to three minutes, and as you come to speak, if you will give us your name and address for the record, please, then we will go from there. The first one listed is Rebecca Dobbins.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I am Rebecca Dobbins. For those of you who do not know, I'm the Executive Director of the Greater High Point Food Alliance. The address of our agency is 815 Phillips Avenue, High Point, North Carolina, 27262. So, that all you need?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. So, I wanted to provide an update today regarding our Fill the Gap campaign, launched in late October as a result of the government shutdown. I want to begin by thanking Mayor Cyril Jefferson and city council members for sharing our campaign information with local leaders in our community. And I also want to thank Councilman Holmes, since I'm here, for speaking. He was our keynote speaker at our annual food summit this year, so I want to thank him for that and being present for that. We are so thankful for our community and how the response has been for our campaign. As you are aware, the shutdown created significant delays in SNAP benefits. More than 50,000 Guilford County households depend upon SNAP each month, and many families were left uncertain about when or whether their benefits would arrive. And this came at a time when our local food providers already experienced, year over year, an increase in demand from 2021, so it's steadily increasing. And today, December 1st, also marks a day with new requirements to community members receiving SNAP benefits, which may cause further delays in continued support for households as they navigate these new changes. So, during the shutdown, I want to share a few, a few stories that our food pantry leader shared. They shared updates that highlighted both the urgency of the situation and the remarkable commitment of our partners. So, one pantry reported serving nearly 900 families in a single week, and that was the highest number they have ever seen. Another leader shared the story of a disabled parent who came in with one of their children, and the family had been living off peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. And when they came there and they got to walk through the pantry and pick a variety of nutritious foods to access for that coming week, they were so thankful, they said they cried tears of joy. On the day they were open, and they closed that day, and their volunteers were tired because they had just served a higher number than they usually serve, but a mother with four children showed up and knocked on the door, and they said, "You know what? We're going to help you." And so, they took her in, and even though their supplies were depleted, they walked her through, they helped her get some supplies, and the things they were out of, they were like, "Don't worry, we've got you for next week." So, to date, our campaign has raised a little over $100,000. Through the Fill the Gap campaign, we are coordinating distributing checks to 29 local food pantries and partner organizations. We developed a rubric to guide our allocations, surveyed local food providers to assess needs, and will continue to support the 29 partner agencies over the next coming weeks. This support helps restock shelves and strengthen our collective effort to alleviate hunger across neighborhoods most affected by these changes. Beyond financial assistance, the Food Alliance continues to connect neighbors to essential resources through our community resource guide, the Greater Guilford Food Finder app, and we continue to work to connect resources and advocate for community needs regarding food security. So, thank you to the community and to all of y'all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. That's a lot, a lot of work and a lot of heart goes into what you guys do and for our community, and we appreciate it very much. Next is Louis Thibodeau.
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Thibodeau. I reside at 1242 Kensington Drive, High Point. To all here, I thank you for coming, and I'd like to pray for all of us, especially the city council that makes these decisions that affect each one of us in some way. Heavenly Father, I thank you that we can come to you, dear God, not only in our need, but in our joys. And dear God, we lift up this city council and these, in this city that makes these decisions, dear God, that they rely on you and your wisdom. And dear God, that you give them protection in all that they do, but dear God, much more the wisdom. Help us all to know that you are real, and one day you will return. And dear God, I thank you. In your son's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
One other thing I wanted to add. My daily read today was my life verse, which is Jeremiah 29:13, which states, "You shall seek me and find me when you search for me with all your heart," talking about Jesus. We have to search for Him. You know, this time as we go is, you know, we sing peace on earth, goodwill towards men. My only thought is, I don't think we'll ever see peace on this earth, but we can have peace because of Jesus as we go through this life. And, you know, I met, I meet people, and I met someone just the other day at lunch, and I asked the lady that was waiting on us, I said, "Ma'am, is there anything I can pray for you about?" And she said, "Yes, my house just burned down, and my three-year-old grandson was playing with matches, and now I live in a camper." And I said, "Yes, I'll pray for you." There was another gentleman I walked across, first responder, and asked if he needed prayer. There are people that need our prayers, and if you're in belief in Jesus Christ, we need to share that, because if someone wouldn't have shared it with us, where would we be? I know where I'd be. Lost. So, thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Next is Kenneth Brown.
My name's Kenneth Brown. I work at 816 East Green Street. Last year, I come up here, make sure we got paid decent, and it was a fair pay. Took a little while, but I found out we was. I appreciate the hard work y'all did. Then y'all go and take the 15% away from us for working overtime, for being on call. It's been in place since 1994. It just doesn't make no sense. Get a letter that says, "Oh, it's because of the new tax credit." I talked to tax experts. All of them said, "That's, that's a load of hockey. That y'all can still give us that and give us the tax break too." So, I'm here to ask why. Somebody answer that question, please. You get hired on to our positions. We get on call. We work all night long, many hours. You get told, you get time and a half plus 15% for working, for being on call. And y'all just take it away, eh, it'll be okay. It's not okay. So, can y'all, somebody?
Kenneth, the public comment period is a time for council to hear from, from you, from the public, and express your thoughts or concerns.
Sometime this week.
We, we will certainly have staff, a member of staff reach out to you to discuss your specific issue.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. That's all that have signed up, but if anyone else would like to make any comments, you may please come to the dais, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dorothy Dar, the Executive Director of the Southwest New York Foundation. We have Appeal Box 778, and the address is 501 West High Avenue in High Point, 27260. It's a very famous zip code here in High Point, opportunity zones. I'm just here to present our report of 2025, 2026. Some of you already have it, but Britt Moore advised me to come to city council and present it before the public hearing. That'd be the best way to say, "Please read it and consider it, and see what we've done, and see how we partnered and collaborated with the city of High Point, and I hope you will continue to collaborate in the future." I am humbled to be adjacent to Habitat for Humanity, who's, I would love to raise money for you all. I mean, you all have done just such a tremendous job in the South Side community. And also, the 1913, you know, the street is the level that we work on. So, 1913 chapter, I never do Greek write, so I'm not going to try it. But we started in 2011 as a community development. We started by looking at the assets in the community, both the environmental assets and the, and the man-made assets and which to build. And I think every community has a different personality. We're Census Track 143, and, and every Census Track has a different personality. So, we really need to look at those assets and build upon them. We have so many assets in the city of High Point that we don't really appreciate often, and we don't build on those and connect those up, because if we just connect those up and also raise the minimum wage, so we wouldn't have so much food insecurity. And of course, faith is the driver of all change in this world, mission and faith. So, anyway, I'm just here to say, if you'd like to have coffee over the holidays, I'd be glad to meet you at Cogden Yards, so we can talk about anything. If you have any questions, please just email me or give me a call, and we'll be glad to answer. I've also included in these reports a kind of supplemental documentation. I'm never here without paper, which I know everybody's like visual these days. But anyway, I'll just pass them out to Tim, or to you, and you can do it. And if, and if you already have one, just give them out to your friends or anybody interested in environmental health and town planning, which not everybody is, but it's, it's really an exciting prospect. And I, I do think we have the opportunity for peace on earth, goodwill towards men, and connectivity with all, all peoples, as the Episcopalians say, the peoples. So, anyway, thank you so much, and happy holidays to y'all.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Come forward.
You knew it.
Wouldn't be a meeting without hearing from the esteemed.
Exactly right. Carl Vina Foster, 818 Runyon Drive, High Point. I first want to start by welcoming my friend, Chris Williams, back to High Point City Council. I've had the opportunity to work with Chris when he was on council before. We share a wonderful relationship, as I do with all of you. All of you are my friends, but I want to commend this council for making that appointment. Chris undoubtedly is the very best choice to complete this term. So, Chris, welcome back. And secondly, I want to be sure that all of you know that on Wednesday at 4 o'clock PM, there is going to be a groundbreaking for the new Allen J Elementary School. I'm just here to present our report of 2025-2026. Some of you already have it, but Britt Moore advised me to come to city council and present it before the public hearing. That'd be the best way to say, please read it and consider it, and see what we've done, and see how we partnered and collaborated with the city of High Point, and I hope you will continue to collaborate in the future. I am humbled to be adjacent to Habitat for Humanity, who's, I would love to raise money for you all. I mean, you all have done just such a tremendous job in the South Side community, and also the 1913, you know, the street is the level that we work on, so 1913 chapter. I never do Greek right, so I'm not going to try it, but we started in 2011 as a community development. We started by looking at the assets in the community, both the environmental assets and the man-made assets and which to build. And I think every community has a different personality. We're census tract 143, and every census tract has a different personality. So we really need to look at those assets and build upon them. We have so many assets in the city of High Point that we don't really appreciate often, and we don't build on those and connect those up, because if we just connect those up and also raise the minimum wage, so we wouldn't have so much food insecurity. And of course, faith is the driver of all change in this world, mission and faith. So anyway, I'm just here to say, if you'd like to have coffee over the holidays, I'd be glad to meet you at Cogden Yards, so we can talk about anything. If you have any questions, please just email me or give me a call, and we'll be glad to answer. I've also included in these reports a kind of supplemental documentation. I'm never here without paper, which I know everybody's like visual these days, but anyway, I'll just pass them out to Tim, or to you, and you can do it. And if you already have one, just give them out to your friends or anybody interested in environmental health and town planning, which not everybody is, but it's really an exciting prospect, and I do think we have the opportunity for peace on earth, goodwill towards men, and connectivity with all peoples, as the Episcopal can say, the peoples. So anyway, thank you so much, and happy holidays to y'all.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Y'all know I was gonna say something.
Come forward.
You knew it.
Wouldn't be a meeting without hearing from the esteemed.
Exactly right. Carl Vina Foster, 818 Run and Drive, High Point. I first want to start by welcoming my friend, Chris Williams, back to High Point City Council. I've had the opportunity to work with Chris when he was on council before. We share a wonderful relationship, as I do with all of you, all of you are my friends, but I want to commend this council for making that appointment. Chris undoubtedly is the very best choice to complete this term, so Chris, welcome back. And secondly, I want to be sure that all of you know that on Wednesday at 4 o'clock PM, there is going to be a groundbreaking for the new Allen J Elementary School. It is the first school on the list in High Point to have the groundbreaking. There have been five or six in Greensboro, but we are so excited to be able to announce that this Wednesday again, on the 3rd, at 4 o'clock PM, the groundbreaking for the new Allen J Elementary School will take place at that site, and it's going to be a complete rebuild. So this is going to be a brand-new school. So hopefully, all of you, or some of you and the general public, will have the opportunity to come out and share in this historic event for High Point, the very first school. There are several more, but we're glad, after four years, to have this first one happen here in High Point. So, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Thank you.
Hello. Sorry, I'm pretty short. Hi, everyone. My name is Carrie Thompson. I am the founder and executive director of Family Room, or Foster Care Resource Center. We are housed at 204 Southwest Gate Drive in Greensboro, North Carolina, but we serve children anywhere, anywhere in the state of North Carolina. As of date, we have served kids in 47 of the 100 counties in North Carolina. I wasn't sure if I was going to talk tonight, but you guys are so welcoming that I wanted to at least introduce myself to those of you that have not heard of Family Room and tell you a little bit about us. Imagine that you get a call for a newborn baby that needs somewhere to go, and they want you to be at the hospital in an hour to pick him up. He's five pounds, so you need to bring a car seat and plan to stay for a couple hours for that car seat test, and if he passes that test, take him on home. So you show up, because you borrowed a friend's car seat. You live in Greensboro, but he's at High Point Regional. You don't care where he's from, you care that he needs somewhere to go. That was one of my current sons, 11 years ago, called a friend really quickly and said, hey, I know that you need your car seat, but can I borrow it for a day, because I have to go pick up this baby from High Point Regional. We fostered him. A year later, we fostered his brother. A year later, we adopted one. A year later, we adopted the other, and two years later, we started Family Room, because 5,000 kids a year come into foster care in the state of North Carolina. And if they can't find a home in High Point, then they send them somewhere else. We serve kids at Family Room that have been sent to Mecklenburg County that were born and raised in High Point. So we will never turn a child away that comes into foster care, regardless of where they're from or where they're placed. We are on call 24/7 to provide these families that say yes to that call everything that they need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, at no charge to the families. So we're here to fill that gap. They need a car seat and the bed and the stroller. We served a family this morning that said yes to a newborn baby on her way to the hospital, and she had nothing. And she came and got everything that she needed at no charge, because it could be a month before she receives any financial support from the state. So I encourage you all to please, I'm going to reach out to you all and invite you all for a tour of Family Room, so you can come and see the current facility that we are in, and I can share with you more about the impact that Family Room has on not just Guilford County, but the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing with us.
My name is Jesse Lopez. I am a student from Southwest Guilford and a citizen above all, and I'm thankful and honored to be standing before our community and our government today. So I want to start off by saying that I want to talk about an issue that has been remaining for the past year, and that is federal encroachment on immigration policy. We've all seen people that we've know, well, I'm a part of the immigrant community, I belong to it, and in that community, I've seen people grow afraid of being, going outside. They've seen the videos of Charlotte, Raleigh, ICE in North Carolina, and they've, immigrant businesses have been left empty because of these ICE raids. In North Carolina, children now have to shop because the ones close to them can't, parents can't go outside anymore. And most importantly, we've seen this all, the people have spoken for those who cannot speak through various protests in High Point, including. And I want to say that immigrants make up 14% of High Point's population, meaning the immigrant community is a significant population in High Point, and that means that a significant amount of that percentage of that population is afraid of being picked up and never to return. We are aware that the city of High Point cannot do much in response to state and federal law, but that doesn't render any effort to be useless. For example, the Greensboro City Police Department has stated that its officers will not make inquiries about immigration status, nor will they stop vehicles to check immigration status. We wonder if High Point can do the same thing. High Point has made various changes to its city, and they're all present within its new infrastructure, and we're grateful for that new infrastructure. Even if it takes years to implement policy, it is worth a shot to defend immigrant communities with it from federal encroachment. Not only that, but advocacy can work as well. High Point has been able to look out for its residents via linking people to community resources and even calling out fake inspectors. So we wonder if High Point can do the same thing for the immigrant community by linking them to local nonprofit organizations that deal with integration, or even hosting a public know-your-rights workshop with a local immigration lawyer. If the city of High Point implements these efforts, it would be a way of giving back to those who gave to High Point through its economy, society, and culture. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else care to speak? Okay. Well, we will close the public comment period and thank everyone who came and shared tonight. We will move on to, and I know how this works sometimes, so I want to go off script just real quick, because it's the holidays, because I know sometimes people scoot out of here, and I understand that, but please go downtown and check out all the great things that are going on in your city of High Point. That light show that's downtown at Truist Stadium is truly incredible. It's got over a million lights and the Globe Huts, and it's a wonderful place to go celebrate, meet your neighbors, and enjoy some of the holiday spirit, so. We will move to our general business agenda at this time. The first item on the agenda is 2025-479. Thank you all, Habitat, for being here and for what you did. Thank you. The first item is 2025-479. We're going to have a public hearing regarding economic incentive for Project Ticket, and at this time, we will open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Peter Bishop, our economic director.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem and all of council. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. We certainly did here, celebrating in High Point, got to go see little Sally, bring the family, so it was a fantastic time. I am here to talk to you about Project Ticket. Project Ticket represents a new investment from an existing industry in High Point by an Irish holding company. This project will support the manufacture of RFID labels in the track and trace of inventory and packages, so this will be a retooling and a big purchase of machinery and equipment by this company, a significant capital investment of $30 million in new machinery or equipment, to be exact, and about $1 million, just under $1 million, of renovations to an existing building at 2506 Sinclair Avenue in Southwest High Point. This operation would support 99 new jobs for the city, paying an average wage of $62,250, and that exceeds the Guilford County average. Our staff is recommending an incentive of $300,000 over a three-year period for Project Ticket, and this local incentive is based on the council-approved job creation and building outfit policy. The property at 2506 Sinclair Avenue is served by the City of High Point Water and Sewer, and this is an interesting property, it's sort of right on the service line between Duke Energy and the city of High Point. This property is actually served by Duke Energy Electric Service. Project Ticket is an international company. We are competing with locations in the country of France, as well as an operation in Vermont for this project. They are trying to make a decision by the end of this calendar year, so they are asking the city of High Point, the state of North Carolina, and our friends at Guilford County to be making a decision as soon as possible on potential support for this project. I have a map showing the location of this project off Sinclair and Old Thomasville Road. It's the outfit of about 40,000 square feet. That's currently a warehouse that will be converted into a manufacturing operation for this RFID printing operation. I would be happy to answer any questions of council at this time. Thank you very much.
Any comments, questions for Peter? Peter, you just mentioned it's currently a warehouse. Will that be relocated, or?
The warehouse will not, they won't need as much space, and they will convert other uses of their buildings. There's three buildings in a complex there, and they're manufacturing in two of those buildings right now, so they'll do some machinery and equipment replacement in the existing manufacturing footprint, and then they will expand into this operation, into this, into this building.
Anything else? Okay. I believe there's a, on this item, is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Let's see, applicant. A need has arisen for there to be a continuance of the public hearing to dissent for staff consideration for December 15th of 2025 council meeting, and I will make a motion that we move this to December 15th, or table it till December 15th. Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Next item is 2025-478, consideration of a contract renewal with Atrium Wake Forest Baptist Health, and we will hear from Angela Kirkwood on this.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, all council members, and Madam City Manager. This is a request to renew the contract between Atrium Wake Forest Baptist Health and the city of High Point for our onsite clinic services from January 1st through December 31st, 2026. Through our partnership with Atrium Wake Forest Baptist Health, the city has an onsite health clinic with expanded services that include primary and sick visits, point-of-care testing, lab draws, chronic care management, health education, basic over-the-counter medications, customized wellness website, we do mobile mammograms, we have enhanced wellness program options such as health risk assessments, health coaching, and biometric screenings. In 2026, an additional enhancement with our contract will include hosting all of the firefighter physicals as an event-style program for a one-time fixed cost of $90,825. In 2027, we anticipate a reduction in this cost when we're able to transition to passing some of those physicals through the clinic. 2027, they're projecting maybe 50% of these physicals can run through the clinic. The key benefits for our employees with this partnership includes employee engagement in their own health, reduced time off from work, we have lower out-of-pocket co-pay expenses, and then you have the reduced transportation costs because this is onsite. The estimated annual cost is $406,679, which is billed monthly at a rate of $33,900. The one-time event-style firefighter physical costs are $90,825, with a total estimated cost for 2026 at $497,504. And I would like to note that the firefighter physical cost of $90,825 currently exists in the firefighter department budget, and so this will be a pass-through of these costs so that Atrium can administer the services with just one contract for us. The funds are available in the fiscal year 2025-26 budget, and my request is for council to authorize the appropriate city council and/or employee to execute all necessary documents. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Angela, thank you for this presentation. Can you give us a little insight into the usage by employees, the kind of volume that we see from our employees in terms of utilizing this onsite clinic?
Yes. When we initially started in 2024, we were averaging somewhere between five and six employees per day, and then we had a large increase in that volume when it came time to our seasonal workers. In 2025, this year, we're averaging around six to eight. The ideal goal or target for an agency our size compared to others would be around 10 employees a day. So in looking, and this slide really just breaks down what the costs are in order to get to that total of 406,000. So they did increase the marketing a little bit to partner with our marketing department so that we can really promote the clinic and ensure that employees take advantage of it. You know, just a little story here, you know, I couldn't get to the doctor, and I was getting frustrated, and then I looked in my office, and I saw the flyer, and I said, oh, wait, I can go down the street. And, you know, our co-pays are $35, and then our prescriptions are 10, so going down the street, taking five minutes, my appointment was on schedule, it was an hour, and I saved $45, you know. So it's that message that we need to communicate to our employee population so that employees know, because the way I look at it, with us having a 401K where we match, the dollars you save, you can invest in your own future, and that's what we're really trying to do.
We should have recorded that. That's a great commercial.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ms. Kirkwood, I mean, these benefits, have they been quantified, actual number numbers of savings for the employees who take advantage, and maybe savings to the city because they miss less work and that kind of thing? Has that kind of data been captured?
Yes, they have, and what I just provided, Atrium, their sort of like project team, with all of the numbers that I received from Cigna, who is our insurance provider, so that they can provide me with that data. So those statistics will be available once we start the budget process, and so I gave them a deadline from the standpoint of being able to say, you know, from a return on investment standpoint, from 2024 through 2026, what does this look like for the city? And it's one of those things that we understand the cost of this type of benefit, and we want to be able to bring back the information to say the return on the investment is working in our favor, because my goal is to ensure that employees become more invested in their health, and that way, we can get our diabetes number down, the high cholesterol, and, you know, people will just have better access to care, and if you're healthier, health is the new wealth. So it's more than money, you know? Money is very important, but you can have all the money in the world, but if you don't have health, you really don't have a life. So that's my focus. That's my pitch.
Well, I guess they can share the statistics when you get those back?
Yes.
With council, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
And as a follow-up to Councilman Harmon's comments, this runs on a calendar year, January through December, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You're giving us a total estimated number. It would be interesting, after this year's over, to capture from last year's presentation what we thought the estimated was and what it actually came in to be on the cost, I think.
And, you know, from the standpoint of 2024?
It counts for more. We understand we'll do the analysis of what it cost for us last year and whether or not we were able to make budget with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because, look, insurance is tough. I was going to say a tough racket, but I don't know if I want to put that on the record, but it would be interesting to see, so, okay.
I'll make one more comment real quick. So council members can utilize this clinic as well, and I've used it a couple of times, and it's really great, because you can make your appointment online. You normally can get it within that day or within 24 hours, so it is, it is very helpful. And I can imagine with someone that's on a really tight schedule, like an eight to five, to be able to get something quickly and so close would make it great. So thank you. So thank you so much. I think it's a great perk for our employees. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 2025-478.
I'll second.
There's a motion, second by Councilman Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Kirkwood. Next item is 2025-480. We're going to consider an appointment to the Housing Authority. And the council's requested to confirm the appointment of Leah McNair to the Housing Authority to fill an unexpired term. The term will be effective January 1st, 2025, and will expire December 22nd of 2027. Anyone want to speak to this appointment?
I will, but after we do the second one.
You will what?
After we do the second one.
Oh. You're going to do all at one time?
We can.
I think they're individual items.
I think that's, yeah, okay. You want to go ahead?
He wants to make his comment at the end of both.
Oh, at the end of both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Well, then I'm going to, look, you just got back on council. I'm going to make a motion to approve item 2025-480.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next item, 2025-481. City council's requested to confirm the appointment of Tiffany Sutherland to the Housing Authority of the city of High Point to fill an unexpired term. Term will be effective January 1st, 2025, and will expire on December 22nd of 2026. Any comments on this?
Well, there's a typo. It says January 1, 2025, but it's January 1, 2026, correct? Okay, just for the record.
Good catch. All right. I'll make a motion to approve item 2025-481.
Second.
There's a motion, second by Tyrone Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, Councilman Williams.
I believe Tiffany Sutherland is in the, can you raise your hand? Okay, I'll be real quick with you. Thank you for doing this. You're going to find that that's an excellent organization. They do more than just house people. They have a holistic approach with youth, with the community. It's busy, but it's great. And you got an excellent staff there, excellent CEO in Angela. And if you got any questions, please, I'm around. I'd be glad to. Because you're kind of covering for me since I came this way. But thank you again. It's excellent work. It's needed work. And be aware that they feed you at your meetings, so enjoy.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments before we end tonight's meeting? Public service announcements. Well, very good. We appreciate everybody being here. If we do not see your faces again before Christmas, have a blessed Christmas and a happy new year. We thank you for being here, and this meeting is adjourned.